Okay. We'll call this meeting to order.
All rise. Oh, yes, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now in session pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Is Brother Les Chapman here tonight by chance? All right, let's bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for this day and this time together and for the opportunity, oh, Lord, to do the work that you've entrusted us with, the work of the people. We pray, oh, Lord, that you will bless us tonight, that you will bless these young people who have so excelled in school as they begin their next stage of journey in life to college. We pray that you'll touch and bless each of them. We're thankful for the teachers and principals of the year and again pray for your blessings and touch upon them. And, Lord, we pray for the work that we have to do tonight as a body. Lord, we pray that we will deliberate, that we will be open-minded, that we will be prepared to receive your guidance and wisdom. Bless us now and bless this great county in your precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right, Mr. Kemp, let's check the roll.
Could each commissioner please record your presence?
Mr. Chairman, we are showing 23 members present.
Okay. Mr. Palmerway is out tonight. Yeah, okay. All right, you're a regular in consent agenda or before you. I'll wait for a motion to approve our agendas. Motion made by Commissioner Akins, seconded by Commissioner Krueger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion to approve our minutes. Motion made by Commissioner Bill Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Please show that Mr. Vaughn abstained, otherwise it's unanimous. Bless you. Recognition of the public.
Anyone wish to sign up that has not already?
Thank you. All right, as you come forward, I will remind everyone that our public comments are limited to five minutes to give everybody a chance to talk and for us to deliberate. We ask that you not say anything disparaging about another citizen of Sumner County, elected official, or the institutions of Sumner County. Otherwise, we ask that you direct your comments towards an item specifically on the agenda tonight. First up, we have Mr. Joe McLaughlin from 2238 Highway 25, Cotton Town, Tennessee. Chief McLaughlin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name's Joe McLaughlin. I'm the fire chief of Cotton Town Volunteer Fire Department. I'd like to just take a minute and talk about the volunteer fire department's proposed budget. Each station in the volunteer fire departments has received $14,000 from the county as a donation since 2013. Prior to that, we received $12,000, I think, for five or six years in a row. $14,000 is just enough to cover Cotton Town's insurance premium. Some of the larger departments, of course, they're going to have a higher insurance premium. Since the first of the year, my department has spent $16,000 on truck repairs alone. So, we're looking at $30,000, which is the amount that I requested from the budget committee. We appreciate the $14,000. However, the call volume that the volunteer fire departments in the county are running is increasing. Just as an example, in May 2017, the volunteer fire departments ran 337 calls. In May this year, we ran 360 calls. And tracking through the year compared to last year, we're well ahead of last year's numbers already. In my fire district alone, we've probably added 50 houses in the last year. So, any increase in the budget would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, Ms. Laura Baker from 424 AB Wade Road in Portland.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Before you tonight, you will have an item to purchase a parking lot that currently belongs to a church in Gallatin. This item came up before the budget committee in October of 2016. Before that was actually voted on by the budget committee, my husband and I did a little study on whether the parking lot was actually needed to accommodate people parking at the court and jail. And over several weeks and using Google Earth, we put together a study that showed that the parking lot was not needed. We had plenty of parking spaces already. And most of you probably don't even know or may not have heard about it because the budget committee voted it down before it ever made it to the full committee. The past 19 months after that vote in October of 2016, the parking lot hasn't been used at all because it's been chained off because we did not pave it as the church requested, which was actually what was before the committee at that time. So, we didn't need it before and we haven't needed in the 19 months since then. And despite what was told to the budget committee last week, this item has not even been discussed for the last 19 months. And now that it's back before you and we've seen this discussed before a couple of committee meetings, we don't even know what we're getting. We've asked about the acreage, that hasn't been reported on. We've asked on what the value of the land is, we haven't been told that. No appraisal's been done. And the agreement, which I don't know if you have seen the whole agreement or not, I haven't seen it published, but the church will get to use this property after we pay $200,000 for it and pave it, and they will get to use it as they see fit. What you may not know is when this was discussed, the paving issue was discussed 19 months ago, that there was an agreement about it, that we would pave the lot and the church would continue to own it and we would pay about a dollar a year or something to use it. But we, as the lessee in that agreement, would at its cost, quote, "repair, pave, stripe, curb, and erect necessary barriers for the parking area." In addition, for use of the parking lot, the lessee shall be responsible for security, cleanup, maintenance, and liability. So, my question would be, what are we signing up for this time? Do we even know? The budget committee hadn't seen that agreement when it was being discussed back in 2016. It's also interesting, too, I'm not sure who else but government would have a deal like this where the buyer gets, the seller gets to continue to use the property. If any of us bought a house, sold the house to someone, and the buyer came back and said, "Well, I want to park my boat there for the weekend because I don't have enough space at my new house," who would do something like that? And if this is for the courthouse, the new planning ahead, I'm just curious whether we know whether this will suit the needs for the new courthouse for parking. If we're going to try to put a garage on this to accommodate the courthouse, is this land big enough? Are we going to need a seven-story parking garage in order to accommodate the 366 parking spaces or so that will be needed for the new courthouse? So, just a lot of questions that I think are unanswered that I would encourage you to send it back and get some more information before voting on it to approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Mr. Kevin Baker, also from 424 AB Wade Road in Portland, Tennessee.
Kevin Baker, you already know that.
Yeah.
I signed up mainly because, you know, you never can tell when somebody gets a lead-off hit and you need to get them across the plate or not, but Laura hit a grand slam with that one. So, but I'm just going to point out, you know, the budget committee talked about getting an appraisal. I don't know who here buys real estate without getting it appraised, you know, getting somebody that's a real estate expert and non-biased. You know, if this goes like anything else around here, the transparency is somewhat lacking. We do this thing because somebody thinks it's a good idea. Somebody says, and it may be a good idea, but if you're really going to be transparent, as several members of this commission have repeatedly said, why don't we get these things documented? Lot of questions, as Laura said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, this time our public comments are completed. One announcement from the chair tonight. We have a thank you note from Beach Cumberland Presbyterian Church that wanted to thank the commission for our gift to the Beach Building Fund that was given in memory of our former commissioner, Jerry Stone, who passed away in April. And so we want to remember the Stone family and Beach Cumberland Presbyterian is very appreciative of the gift that, the gift that they received in the name of Mr. Stone. So, that thank you note is up here if anyone would like to see it. All right, your veteran service report is on your desk. I'm going to now yield the floor to, I believe, Mr. Baker Ring to honor our high school valedictorians. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For several years now, we've been doing this, and I want to read the resolution. In fact, if you're, if you're one of the valedictorians, go ahead and come on up here, and then I'll read the resolution after you get up here. And then pass out the certificates. Spread out, however you want to do it. Someone can join Jonathan over here. There we go. Okay. Certificate of recognition, the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting on this regular session on this 18th day of June 2018 hereby, does hereby honor and commend the valedictorians of the 2018 graduation class in Sumner County. I so move. Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I will present these. I do know that some of them are not here because of family vacations and such, but I will call them. If you're here, go ahead and take it, get it, come up and get it. And if you're not, if they are not here, it'll be mailed to them. Garrett Ball, valedictorian at White House High School. Drake Braxton White, he's out of town, out of the country, I believe. That was Wes Morland. Zachary Ray Edwards, Station Camp High School. Mason Madison Terrell. Hendersonville. Congratulations. Anne Marie Brewer is not here, from Gallatin High School. Brayden Kathleen Carroll from Beach High School. Portland High School, Sarah Hutchinson. Congratulations. Ann McKenzie Morris, also from Portland High School. And for Merrill Hyde, we have Mia Rodriguez. Also from Merrill Hyde, Seth Batad. Congratulations. And Jonathan Caldwell. Congratulations, Jonathan. Sebastian Hosen, also Merrill Hyde, and Kayla Meyer. Thank you. Congratulations to all of you.
Garrett had 28 honors credits.
And I want to take a moment, I know they're headed out, but just to say, you know, if you're valedictorian today in Sumner County, it's a really powerful testimony to the work that you've put in with all the options that kids have with AP and dual enrollment and honors. And these kids have absolutely just set themselves up in the future. They've done tremendous work. They've worked hard. It's a testament to their parents and all their hard work. So, I know they're headed out the door. Let's give them one more round of applause. And that's the, that's the last time I get to be directly responsible for a valedictorian, so I had to, I did have to take a moment there. Plus, Garrett had been mine since he was in sixth grade, so. All right, our principals of the year, Mr. Decker. Our principals and teachers of the year.
Yeah, if we could have the principal and the teachers of the year for high school, middle school, and upper school, or upper school, elementary school come up. That's my private school coming out. You know, we're very fortunate in Sumner County to have an outstanding school system, and we've got some really great leadership with administrators and some really great classroom teachers. And to be nominated within your school is a big honor, but then to be recognized county-wide is even a bigger honor. And we're happy this evening that we can recognize these people who have been chosen by their schools and then by, by the Sumner County Board of Education to be the administrator and the, and teachers of the year. So, I'm going to read each one of, I'm going to read these out and then I will present them. And the first person, Dr. Ron Becker, has a brother named Jerry Becker that most of us know that's part of this commission. I would like to take credit to that I did sign Dr. Becker and Jerry Becker's diploma, so for those of you that would like to know that. But the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this date, the 18th day of June 2018, does hereby honor and commend Dr. Ron Becker for achieving the honor of Sumner County Principal of the Year. Dr. Becker, congratulations.
Second made by Mr. Jerry Becker. All in favor say aye.
Are we going to do them each one or by the?
Well, we made a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Next, the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on the day, on the 18th day of June 2018, does hereby honor and commend Ms. Jennifer Pack Brown as the Sumner County K-4 School Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
Motion made by Mr. Decker, seconded by Mr. Baker Ring. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
J.W. Wiseman, all the way from Portland, Tennessee. The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this date, 18th day of June 2018, does hereby honor and commend Mr. Daniel Johnson as the Sumner County Middle School Teacher of the Year. I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Decker, seconded by Mr. Ring. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Rucker, Stewart, Rucker.
All right. All right. And the High School Teacher of the Year, the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this, the 18th day of June 2018, does hereby honor and commend Ms. Carmen Watts as the Sumner County High School Teacher of the Year, and I happen to know that she teaches at Hendersonville High School. So, I make them, I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Decker, seconded by Mr. Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Becker, would you like to say something about your brother? Let me, let me say while we're talking about Mr. Becker, Ron Becker, Gallatin High School was also a reward school this year, which is very hard to achieve, meaning they were in the, taught one of the top schools in the state, and Mr. Becker's given outstanding leadership at Gallatin High School and very much deserves Principal of the Year, as do, as do the teachers. If you were at the, if you were at the Teacher of the Year banquet and saw and heard the testimonies from the teachers and all the different things that they've accomplished and done, it really does testify to what we have going on in Sumner County, and it's an honor to, to serve alongside them. So, congratulations to our teachers and principal of the year. Mr. Becker, you sure there's got to be something he's done over the years that you want to get back at him about? All right, your consent, excuse me, we have someone coming to honor, Mr. Scott Wateka. I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. Lamar.
Scott, if you and your family would like to come up. I told Scott tonight, this is the sixth time I've got to give this award to him, and I'm honored to do so again tonight, but I told him this is my last one. I said, "I hope it's not your last one," so. Keep bringing them home, buddy. Whereas, the resolution is honoring Mr. Scott Wateka. On Saturday, April the 27th, 2018, Scott Wateka won his sixth consecutive championship in the 19th Annual St. Jude Rock and Roll Nashville Marathon. And whereas Mr. Wateka, who made history by winning the race, beating tens of thousands of runners, posted a time of two hours, 28 minutes, and 19 seconds, including a pit stop, and credits his family and students for encouraging him to enter the race. And whereas Mr. Wateka, a physical education teacher and cross-country trainer at Beach High School, should be commended for his hard work, outstanding dedication, and exceptional skills, as well as the positive publicity and influence he brings to our county and our schools, now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this 18th day of June 2018, that this body does hereby recognize Mr. Scott Wateka for his diligence and perseverance and wishes him much successes in the future endeavors, and I so move.
Motion made by Ms. Lamar, seconded by Ms. Schell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Yeah, yeah, he only beat Commissioner Bill Taylor by 14 hours. And let me say this, I don't know, you know, Mr. Wateka was in White House for a while when my daughters were in elementary school, and the thing about him is in addition to winning marathons and performing at such a high level, he has inspired hundreds and hundreds of kids across the county to run, whether it was in White House or at Jack Anderson, now at Beach. He really does an exceptional job, not just with his own accolades, which stand for themselves, but also inspiring future generations to reach their dreams and goals. And Scott, thank you so much for being the man that you are and coach that you are. All right, your consent agenda is before you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Akins, seconded by Commissioner Lamarb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your county officials' reports are on your desks. We'll move on to the notaries. Is there a motion to approve our notaries? Motion made by Commissioner Baker Ring, seconded by Commissioner Goomenden. Let's vote.
Notary application is on the board. It's, Commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 23 affirmative votes, notaries are unanimously approved.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, let's go to committee on committees. Ms. Lamar.
Tonight we have the Solid Waste Board, Elaine Gore, that we deferred until next, to next month. And then the Library Board, there's three that are being reappointed. No, there's two that's being reappointed, Jessica Hunter and Dan Tull, and I make a motion to group and approve those two.
Motion made by Commissioner Lamarb, seconded by Commissioner Good. See no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Lamar.
And the third one for the Library Board is Johnny Friedel, and that's, he resigned and is being replaced by Jackie Wilbur, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Lamarb, seconded by Commissioner Baker Ring. See no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Lamar.
The next one is a resource authority for six-year term, and this is Billy Goomenden, and it's to reappoint him, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Lamarb, seconded by Commissioner Steve Graves. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Tourism Board appointment, Mandy Christensen, being replaced by the United Chambers Chairman, Merrilee Tice, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Lamarb, seconded by Commissioner Echols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The next four are reappoint, are appointments to committees that Joanne Kemp vacated when she left. The first one is the Budget Committee, and the Committee on Committee Recommendation is Leslie Schell, and I so move.
Second, motion made by Commissioner Lamarb, seconded by Commissioner Good. See no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The next one is General Ops Committee, and the Committee on Committee Recommendation is Lauren Echols, and I so move.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Lamarb, seconded by Commissioner Bill Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The next one is the Delinquent Tax Committee, and the Committee on Committee Recommendation is Lauren Echols, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Lamarb, seconded by Commissioner Good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And the last one for this month is Agriculture Extension Service Committee, and the Committee on Committee Recommendation is for Caroline Krueger, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Lamarb, seconded by Commissioner Good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And next month, we will be appointing the Airport Authority and the Library Board. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lamar. We'll go to education.
Chairman, we had two items that were passed and then moved on to the Budget Committee and will be presented under the Budget Committee Presentation. First was, we approved $3,408,550 from Capital Projects Fund to, for upgrades at Jean Brown Elementary. And then we also approved the Balanced Education Budget, and they made a joint presentation to the, to the Finance Committee, to the Budget Committee, and to the Education Committee, and those were moved on to the, to the Budget Committee. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Highway Commission, Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Hampton.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hampton. Can you hit your button, Ms.?
We made an arrangement with Gallatin. We had a road out here that was sectioned off. They'd have a mile, and we'd have a half a mile, and then they'd come back and pick up a half a mile, and the Road Superintendent made an arrangement to them that we resolved that. They took a stretch of road, and we took the rest of it. So that's about what was significant handled at the Road Committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hampton. General Ops, Ms. Schell. Emergency Services.
Report for this month, sir, but I just want to let everybody know, next month, we'll be reporting on the first meeting we had with C-TAS regarding the volunteer fire departments, and we'll also need to have quorum so we can pass the resolution to bid out the new radio system.
Okay.
Jim.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Legislative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 1806-01, Resolution to Approve Agreement Between City of Gallatin and Sumner County Annexation for Langford Farms for Provision of Urban Services. It was unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Schell. See no one in the queue. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
That's it, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Becker, Financial Management. Okay, thank you, Mr. Becker. Budget. Mr. Foster tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Before we get into the specific resolutions, I have a few general comments about the budget and the budget process. First of all, I want to thank David Lawling and his staff, Jessica Alson and Bethany Browning, for all their hard work. It's a very difficult, complex process that, as everyone knows, that we go through to formulate a budget and get it complete on time, and they do an excellent job, and I want to recognize their efforts. And also, I want to also thank the elected officials and the department's heads for their cooperation during this time. Sometimes it's not the easiest of tasks, but we all work together professionally and in mind of coming together for the better of the county. On the county budget, the budget was put together, and I am proud to say it includes no tax increase or issuance of new debt. We had a 2% employee pay raise for every county employee. The budget unassigned fund balance from fiscal year 2018 to 2019 is an approximate $2.3 million increase, so that's a good thing. The budgeted ending fund balance from 2018 to 2019 is an approximate $650,000 increase, which is another good thing. Over the last two years, the tax levying, the General Debt Service Fund, has gone from .3542 cents to .03 to allow for direct capital purchases in lieu of borrowing. This has created a favorable scenario of $16.5 million of unbudgeted funds to be available for capital improvements in fiscal year 2019. On the school side, the employee raises, the classified employees merited a 2% increase, the certified zero to 19-years was a 1.7% increase, and the 19-plus-years employees got a 1.5% increase. Of the $14.7 million in new expenses on the school side, $11.8 million of that money directly ties to new positions and budgeting payroll costs, it's tied to a paycheck in one point or another. Of that 14.7 in new expenses, 1.9 million was in capital, which included 20 new buses at $1,750,000 and textbooks at $1,050,000. For the fifth year in a row, there was an increase in per student instructional allocation to school of $5 from $70 to $75, and the school budget maintains a $2 million undesignated fund balance for fiscal stability. So, onto the specifics resolutions. 1806-02 is the funding for the nonprofit entities that we have in the county. Every single entity except for two, which is the Tourism Board, saw an increase of $90,000, and Ford Sumner saw an increase of $15,000. All other entities in this resolution remain the same funding as the year before, and I move to approve.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Mr. Goomenden. Mr. Driver.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the work that the Budget Committee does, and I recognize how difficult that is, and I do recognize we have committee systems here, and I serve on the Emergency Services Committee and have served on it for the past four years, I believe. But sometimes things just slip through the cracks. We've been working on trying to get something done for volunteer fire departments for the last four years. I've tried to work closely with everybody involved. People have different opinions on it. But a large portion of our county is dependent upon volunteer fire departments for protection. It's been several years since we've had an increase, and, you know, they're needing help in purchasing and updating equipment, training, and many other things. We give money to a lot of good causes. They are lumped in with all nonprofits, all good causes. Forward Sumners in there, Senior Citizens Centers are in there. These folks are out there every day, you know, fighting fires, standing on the road, helping with accidents, whatever else. They need equipment, they need insurance, they need maintenance on their vehicles, and what we're asking here is a lot of money for all of us, but it's minor compared to what we're spending in other parts of the budget. I mean, you know, we're voting on greenways, and I know that's a different part of the budget. In fact, everything else in the world, millions and millions of dollars, I don't think it's too much to ask for some improvements in these. These departments work hard to raise their own funds, but they need additional help from us, and the people living in the areas they cover want us to give them some help. And Mr. Kemp, I ask you, if you would, to put this up. This is a graphic that, you know, I actually did myself from the map today. Quite frankly, it does not show every area they cover because there were places I could not, the colors were so close together, I could not distinguish it. All of that area that has been shaded in is covered by volunteer fire departments. So you can see where the cities are. Westmoreland covers a large portion of their area, but outside of that, I'd say about 80% of certain counties covered by volunteer fire departments, and those people have no other help in a fire and things like that than these guys, and they provide a valuable service. So at this time, I'm going to propose an amendment to 1806-02 to appropriate $24,000 to each volunteer fire department. This is an addition of $10,000 per volunteer fire department to come from the general fund. I spoke with Mr. Pomeroy this morning, he is in Florida. He tried to walk me through, you know, how I needed to ask for this, and we talked about the fact that we budget conservatively, and our growth is figured conservatively, and so hopefully we'll have enough in there to cover this $130,000. I'm not on the Budget Committee. I wish I could speak better about that, but I just know that it needs to come from the general fund. And so, again, I'd like to make the motion that we increase the allocations of the volunteer fire departments by $10,000 per station, which would be a total of $130,000.
Second. Okay, so we got an amendment from Mr. Driver to the, to 1806-02 to increase the funding on the volunteer, each of the volunteer fire departments by $10,000.
Correct.
For a total of $130,000 new dollars.
Of course.
Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Driver and seconded by Commissioner Guthrie. Next in the queue is Mr. Graves.
Okay, I was going to second, but that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyway, I think we need some more funding out in rural parts of the county for this. I was just sitting here thinking about it. They are the first responders, most time they get there for the ambulance every time, or the Sheriff Department most of the time, not all the time. That's a close, especially, my parents, for example, not lately, but fortunately, there's several out there that I guess live pretty close, but they're always first there. It's very important, not only fires, but being there at that point, too. And I can only speak for out in Bethpage-Castan Springs area, but there's definitely a need for more funding, more training, more resources, so they'll have. And, you know, there's, and the Bethpage Fire Department, actually, it's an individual that's let up use a building for several years, and then I think charges them maybe a dollar a year. Anyway, that's, I think there's a big need for more money to fund these people, and they volunteer, there's time, and it's a lot of time in that, too. A lot of times, it's 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, they have to get up and go. So I'd like to see some of the commissioners that live in the cities, just their opinion on it, see what they think about it, if they would.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Graves.
Thank you.
Mr. Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got several students who work as volunteer firefighters, and I'm very familiar with what's going on over there, and I, you know, they provide a valuable service for the county. However, if I remember correctly, a little while ago, Mr. Taylor, Chris Taylor, made a comment about the Emergency Services Meeting with C-TAS regarding volunteer fire departments. I'd like to hear what that's about and what he might have to say in that regard.
Mr. Taylor, if you'll hit your button, we'll go, we'll jump and go to Chris Taylor.
Real quick, just to address the money part of it, Commissioner Driver's right. We've done a very, very conservative approach on the budget. There is the 130, is it 13 or 14?
13.
Okay. There is 130,000. I would just caution everybody in the room that we don't need to keep finding 130,000 over and over, that, you know, once might be probably kind of scary enough as it is, but there is the money there if we really had to do that. As far as C-TAS goes, they were fantastic. We met with them, Ms. Denham, this week. What they're going to do is they're going to come in and they're going to speak with all the volunteer fire departments individually. They're going to go out and assess their area, they're going to look and see what all they've got to cover, correspond that with the cities, the municipalities, sorry, and their coverage, and then try and figure out the best way for the county to provide fire coverage for all those unincorporated areas. And what they'll kind of say is, hey, you might need to condense some here, you might need to expand some of the volunteers in other areas. And then they're also going to point out some things, like the fact that I think most of us know that there's not enough water lines to run fire hydrants to a lot of the new subdivisions, so that would come in, and they might say, hey, you need to have more tanker trucks than you have, or different avenues for water, you know, if it's water storage or something for the subdivision. So they're going to kind of give us an overview of how we need to best provide fire protection for the county. They're not going to tell us how to fund it. They will be kind enough to explain to us how other counties have done it, some that are successful, some that aren't, and kind of give us some ideas. He hopes to, if everybody is really quick, and when I say everybody, I mean the volunteers and municipalities are quick to get the surveys back to them, to meet with them, and do the interviews, he's hoping to maybe have it done before the spring. He realizes the importance of trying to get it done before budget year's done, so. Does that kind of cover it? Did I leave out anything, Ms. Denham?
Thank you, Chris Taylor. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Baker. Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Denham. I'd love to give them more money. My concern is that because of the point, if you give them so much money, if you give them a certain amount of money, then it's going to cause an issue because the people in the city are paying the same property taxes as the people in the county. I'd love to see us at some point go to a county virus, fire districts, if possible, or something like that, where we can properly fund the fire parks if we really are not funding money. But, you know, until we get some of these issues worked out, I can't vote for this at this time.
We're going to Commissioner, Mr. Becker, you were in queue earlier, I knocked out when we were around, and she's still on screen. Okay, I already did, I already did. Okay, let's go to Commissioner Jerry Van. Sorry.
Mr. Graves is still on. Steve Graves is still on.
There he is.
Is Baker's microphone on?
Steve Graves is still on.
Laura's not working at all now.
They won't.
Baker's just running.
Speak loudly. Let's go.
So, so I have a couple of things. One, Commissioner Ring just touched on it, and I wasn't sure what the, what the bogey, what the breakpoint is of my donation to the volunteer fire departments. Ms. Denham, do you have?
We don't know what the bottom line is.
Is that something that we can find out, or is it just something that?
Funding has to be from non-problemic tax sources, and law may be a better rest of than I would, but we just don't have a lot of sources other than our property taxes. Sales taxes are being cast on, so there's some of the other loads on one end, but we can't find all sources.
Okay, so is it possible we can inadvertently be owed the bogey and get some type of penalty?
It's not that you're going to get a penalty, it's that a city taxpayer could sue, claiming that they are getting property taxed.
Okay.
That's what's happening in other counties.
Okay. So do we, how can we find out what that level is, you know, so we don't get sued? Yeah, you're right.
My guess is it's going to be on the judge.
Okay. There's got to be something.
You realize that there's a lot of different donations that are made by the county that fall into different categories. There's other donations we make that are not going to be under property taxes as well. There are certain donations that we make that are authorized by statute.
Some that are just donations. This is one of those things that's a donation for a not-for-profit, and the amount of money's kind of a moving target because every day people are staying in hotels and motels. There could be a big soccer tournament, and there could be more money come in the next month. There's just no way to know. It's kind of a fluid number.
Okay, so, okay, so I don't feel comfortable with the lack of more solid information on that, but my second question, I guess, though, is, I know I was on the Budget Committee for a couple of years previously, and we had talked about instead of 14,000 straight across the 13, or maybe it was 12 at that point, but it's 13 now, to maybe use some type of formula for coverage, either mileage or residence, or whatever it was, instead of sort of going at it like a one-size-fits-all, or however you want to call it. But now that we're adding, according to the amendment, another 130, so it's a total of 312,000, I would think that maybe it would make even more sense now to use some type of formula instead of just a cut-and-dry 24 per fire hall, if anybody on the Budget Committee or other ones wants to speak to that.
We have several of you, Mr. Becker, so we'll try to get through, if not, we'll try to get through. Uh, Michelle. I'm sorry, I'll come back in a second.
Sorry. I don't know if I was next in the queue or not, but I was called on, so I'm going to go ahead and roll with my statement. I obviously live in the county, and I actually have two volunteer fire districts that are within our district, and a third that actually services my home personally. And so, we, our family locally supports our volunteer fire departments. Unfortunately, everybody that lives in our county does not participate in that, and if they did, we wouldn't be talking about this issue right now. I am going to support Mr. Driver's motion, but I would just want to clarify, I do not think it's a long-term goal to continue to do it, but I do think that I can support this as a short-term solution until we can hear back from C-TAS and see what their recommendation is. I know that Commissioner Taylor said hopefully C-TAS will be back at spring. Very shortly after spring, a few months later, we begin our budget process for the next year, and so I feel like if we do nothing, then we are basically going a whole year and asking them to continue to service the citizens with a very minimal budget. And so, I am willing to support this for a one-year time until we can get back what C-TAS would recommend, so, thank you.
Michelle, we're going to Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, I have three of these in my district, and that map that was very well represents the areas that they service, wasn't a lot of purple in there that serviced by Westmoreland because they actually, they have a city fire department that's also a volunteer basis as well that goes all the way to 31, to the Kentucky line.
We try to keep that purple map white out.
Yeah, yeah, over into Portland, yeah. Anyways, we've had two fires on one road in a week that's serviced by that fire department, Pleasant Grove Road, which thankfully has city water. Pleasant Grove Road, which thankfully has city water. So, um, I got calls today about this and told them I would support it, and I just turned to page eight where this is covered at. Not, you know, if we can fund it somewhere else, but on page eight, there's a hundred and five thousand dollar increase from last year. So, if you, if you're struggling to look for somewhere, not recommending it, somebody wants to make the motion, it's a little over eight thousand dollars per, per fire hall, um, and it's on that page. So, just thumbing through from having not a lot of time today to look at it, just looking at that page, um, so, I'll support this. But I hope maybe C-TAS, when they, I, I don't know that they were directed to, to look at our lack of water in a lot of the areas that this services, these volunteer firemen's, because you can spend a lot of time trying to save somebody's home, hauling water back and forth from one place to the other because there's not a hydrant. We even need to, just for, while I have the floor, we need to address when we do our grants and stuff, we need to put more fire hydrants on these roads that, that we're running water lines. Because the shorter distance the fire truck has to run to, to reload with water, the better response they have to the fire, and it also helps the homeowner's insurance policy. Uh, the closer you are to a fire hydrant, the better rates you'll have on fire service and part of your homeowner's insurance. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We're gonna go to Commissioner Kruger.
Uh, there it is, okay. Um, I have a couple of questions, well, actually I have one question first of all, and Mr. Driver, since he did that map, might be the best person to answer this. Do we know how many school campuses are inside that region that you have mapped? I know of at least one, because I have students in that school campus. Can anybody else answer that question? Does anybody from emergency services? Michael Guthrie?
About six.
About, about six schools?
Or some.
And/or campuses?
A lot of them, a lot of them, or several.
Okay. I, I know that, I, I am a city taxpayer, and I pay my city taxes, but guess what? I send my children to a school that is not inside the city limits and is dependent on a volunteer fire department if something were to happen. Um, I think that's relevant and that's important, and I think that's something that we have to take into account, is that, that nobody's really talking about, is that even if you're a resident in the city and you pay your county taxes for, uh, and your city taxes for city fire service, if your children don't go to school inside the city limits, they're subject to the need and the necessity of the Sheriff's Department and the volunteer fire department that is closest to them. And so, I, I, I support this, uh, for a lot of reasons, but first and foremost, I think there are a lot of children that need this support in our county. And I think that's one thing that we've always been huge proponents of, is taking care of the kids in this county for the future. Uh, I, I also agree with some of the things that have been said earlier, that I, I think that in the next year, we need to come up with a much better plan to take care of this, uh, and to take care of it for long-term. This is not necessarily an ideal term, thing for long-term, and we have issues with water, um, that a lot of these, these volunteer fire departments still can't even handle a, a major fire because they don't have fire hydrants and they don't have tankers to take care of that. So, there's a lot of things that I think when we have the C-TAS, when Chris Taylor reports back to us from C-TAS, that we will be able to work more definitely on, but I do support this for the one year. Uh, the other thing is, is that as developers and builders come in and build homes, one of the things I know we've talked about over the last year to two years, is having those developers and builders give money to those volunteer fire halls on an annual basis if they're building inside of the county and outside the city. And I think that's important, that we maintain that no matter what, that we need to ask these people that are wanting to build homes in the county to make a commitment to give annually to those volunteer fire departments that are going to be supporting the homes that they build. Um, with that being said, I think I said, for a year, I think that this is a good, a good step, but hopefully in the next year, we'll have better, more firm options. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I think I'm right in saying that all the volunteer departments have mutual aid agreements with the cities. I think I'm right. I, I'd like that to be verified, if, if somebody could.
No, sir, not necessarily.
Why do we not?
Part of that is, it just hasn't ever been done, and so we're working through that this year. We don't have mutual aid agreements with our emergency management either. So, we're working, those have all come up as we've grown, and we've realized that in talking with the fire chiefs over the past year, that that's something we need to address. And so, we've said we're going to, but I don't want to put too much on this thing.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, as far as mutual aid agreements, we don't have any as far as the county goes. We don't have them between emergency management and, and the municipalities. We don't necessarily have them between the county and the volunteer fires. It's, as the county has grown, it's just not something we've addressed. We've talked with Ms. Denham about it. We're planning on trying to address that over the next two years. It's a lot of work in the sense that it's a lot of sit down and figure some things out. It can easily be done, but it's having enough bodies in the law office to do it. So, it's something we are gonna address, it's just a little bit further down the list.
If, uh, now, I think what I just heard, if, if, uh, volunteer fire department in Westmoreland gets in trouble, that they can't call Goulton for backup, or Portland.
The volun, the volunteer fire department and the city may have an agreement, but we're not a party to it, because remember, the volunteer fire departments are independent not-for-profit corporations. The cities are independent, and it's not something that we would necessarily be part of. The goal ultimately is to get a network created, but that's not anything that's ever been proposed, as we've been waiting to C-TAS analysis.
I have been told by city fire department that they were more than willing to sign a mutual aid, but they hadn't been asked by the local volunteer group. Now, w- we don't have any supervision over these people. I mean, they don't have to do nothing we ask them to do or tell them to do. So, I'd like to re- respectfully request that they, that they approach their closest municipality and see if that isn't some arrangement they can make to accomplish that. And I would also respectfully request that, that they come back to Emergency Services Committee and give an accounting of where the expenditures goes for this money. I mean, I think it's only reasonable, rather than just dropping a lump of money in their lap, which I'm gonna vote to do, but we would just respect or to tell this body, where did, where did that money go? What did we buy? Did we buy tankers? Did we buy, you know? So, a, and they'll be in better favor next year if they do a good job with that information coming back. Thank you.
We're gonna go to Commissioner Bill Beatty.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Each year, we bring this up without any resolution. I too live in the county, and I respect what the volunteer fire department does, and I see how they work, and they, they do, I do an admirable job with, with a shoestring budget. However, I am disappointed in the people that benefit from the volunteer fire departments. They don't participate. They don't pay the nominal fee that the fire departments ask to, to pay, to help fund their, fund their fee. They try to sell pictures, they try to do concerts, they try to sort things that raise money without much success. Um, I, I don't know what the tipping point was, participation would be for the people that go, that use that, would, would potentially have to use them, but i- it would be a significant difference in their budget had, had everybody been there. Um, however, at the eleventh hour, which is now, for us to start saying, let's just, um, add to this budget without going through the proper procedure is, is probably not prudent and a proper process. I, I agree with Chris Taylor that letting C-TAS go through the study complete first, and let's get a, let's get some answers, and then we can make an informed decision. Right now, we're making a, a gut, um, decision that we, you know, a feel-good decision, and maybe we need to make an informed decision on who benefits most and what the best way to do it is, and we're not ones who can judge that. C-TAS has done that and gone through that and made that, done that, so why not use them, just like we did on the, uh, County Courthouse? Uh, perchance, a fire district might be the way to go. If the people in those districts knew that they had, potentially having to raise their taxes, rate, have to pay an additional fee to, for funding to fire departments, maybe they would then start realizing that maybe that twenty-five, fifty-dollar-a-year donation might be, might go a lot longer way in doing that. Well, let's plan first. In Planning Department, we're starting to see all these farms are now being used, sold as developments. In the past, counties didn't do developments, cities did. Now, we're doing developments. We have four-inch water lines to, to, and, to, to, to go with a fire depart, a fire hydrant, fire hydrants can't support a four-inch water line. So, either we require the developers now to put in an eight-inch or six-inch water line all the way to where it goes, uh, or we don't do any funding, uh, with fire hydrants. Uh, we just approved in, in Planning a, a two-thousand-dollar, uh, Winston's having a big day, uh, two-thousand-dollar, uh, go to the fire department, escrow department for a whole fifty, fifty-home subdivision. That's ridiculous. Um, we, we're gonna need to change all our zoning requirements, all for, fire, fire hydrants are useless without, without proper wa- water to, to it. So, fire hydrants aren't, aren't, aren't an answer. Funding, forcing, we've had a number of developments who've said, yeah, we'll, we'll give money to, uh, fire, the volunteer fire departments, and there's, none of them have done that yet. Um, so, I think postponing it and, and, and looking at it with what Commissioner Chris Taylor said, would be a prudent way to make an informed decision, uh, later on this year, but not at the next, before next, next budget year. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Ugh. Okay. Um, I too appreciate the work that the volunteer fire departments do in our community. I just, I have a question that echoes one that Commissioner Becker raised. An increase from fourteen thousand dollars to twenty-four thousand dollars is quite significant, and I also would be interested in hearing from Mr. Driver or from somebody else that is knowledgeable about the subject, why we would do a flat ten thousand for each firehouse instead of, you know, if you look at the schools budget, it's a per-student dollar amount, and so, an Oakmont doesn't get the same as a Nanny Berry. That makes a lot of sense to me, and I'm wondering why, you know, if that should be considered.
Uh, we're gonna, Mr. Driver's over there in the queue, so we'll come back in a minute. Just keep the order in the queue. Uh, Mr. Driver, would you like to respond to the second question?
Well, I, I ask your responses, it's a sermon.
Well, all right. Hang on, hang on, you're next. We'll go to Mr. Commission, and then we'll come back.
I'm writing, so I don't forget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just got a couple of comments, and, uh, one of them, Commissioner Dr. Taylor was talking about, the Planning Commission has had, um, several issues with fire protection. Fire protection in itself needs totally reworking in this county. Um, it doesn't stop with the volunteer fire departments. It's true, you have to have a six-inch water line to have a, a fire hydrant on it, but the trouble is, just about all the six-inch water lines are fed with a four-inch water line. So, I don't know if we'll get all that fixed in our lifetime or not. But, and then sometimes, you not only have to have a six-inch water line, but you gotta have a water tank somewhere close by. Then, uh, with that being said, um, on, uh, the road I live on and the neighbors that I have, we have a fire station on each end of the road that, I, all I can say is, we are not pleased with it, and, uh, I do think that each fire station should be evaluated individually, and, uh, I do like the, the fact of C-TAS evaluating them and see where we wind up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Driver.
Um, I was trying to write down some answers to several questions here. All good questions. Um, glad we have folks that answer, ask these things, and I'm gonna answer several of them. Last year, in particular, before the budget, we spent a year working on this. We asked the volunteer fire departments to do several things, to jump through several hoops, to come up and have one organization to come up with a plan of why they should get what. They came up with a plan that had a base of twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars, and then, after that point, whatever they got beyond that was based on the number of homes that covered in the area, the number of calls that they ran. So, they did come up with a plan that was not based on everybody getting the same dollar amount. The twenty-four was just the base for each one, and then, depending on, you know, the bigger departments that ran more runs or covered a larger area, got a larger amount after that based on their population and everything. So, basically, we're taking the plan that they put together last year and worked on for those very things that y'all are asking about, and we're just looking at giving them the base, because quite frankly, that's all we're gonna get, at least at this time, budget-wise. You know, if we had the money in the budget, I would be asking for the entire plan that they worked on, that came in and went by a department and, and all that. So, that's, to answer your question, they did work on that, this is just the base amount at the bottom. Um, also, on the C-TAS, I, we're glad, um, they, the fire departments asked for that. Like, as Mr. Taylor said, that's gonna, they're gonna come in and look at what areas, uh, whether maybe we might need a department less or a department more or whatever else. Even if they do that next spring, that is gonna be a process. We're not probably, I'd be, I'd be thrilled if we got that done by budget time next year. Uh, but knowing how everything we do takes a while to get through and just figure out what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it, they need money in the meantime. Uh, there are specific things, but each department has different specific things that they need the money for, but there is no maintenance of effort on this. Okay? So, unlike the Sheriff's Department, if we give them twenty-five thousand this year, we are not required to give them twenty-five thousand next year. Okay? Um, and again, these guys really have gone through the proper channels, asked for all this before last year's budget, and got the same result they got this year, which was no increase, and really not much, in my opinion, not much discussion about the increase, especially last year. Um, I have worked with the legal department. We know it's a touchy issue as far as where the numbers are or whatever, but I am trying to work within a number that we think might be okay. And that's, I mean, unfortunately, this is not a county problem or a law problem, director problem, or anything else. This is a state problem, because the state will not come out and say, you can give them X percent. The state will not come out and say, you can give them X number of dollars. If the state said that, it'd be a no-brainer, we could do and figure out exactly what we were gonna do. Problem is, the state will not tell you where the point is. So, you know, we could stay at ten thousand or fourteen or whatever forever, but at some point or another, we gotta find out where that is anyway, because we are gonna have to do something. Um, and I think that answers most everything everybody was asking about. Uh, i- if there's anything else, I'm sorry about that, but it, this is not something that came up suddenly. We worked on this all year last year, and quite frankly, um, I haven't waited till the last minute to say something about this this year. I've been talking with the Budget Committee about this the whole time, but they could not include it in the budget, so, you know, this is what we're looking at. Excuse me, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Driver. We'll go to Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's been a lot of good points both ways, but I, I really believe that the rural, rural areas are not only un, underfunded, you know, we're underprotected. Uh, sure, ten thousand dollars for each fire station or, that would make a whole lot to them, whether it be uniforms or training, or, uh, go into another truck or whatever, or a pool to put the water from a fire hydrant. They have, uh, some technology, I guess it's called, I'm gonna call it a swimming pool. That helps them out to get it in their pump or tankers faster, they can pump it out of the fire hydrants, if they're available. Some areas of the county doesn't have no fire hydrants, and, and that's, uh, some responsibility. Uh, we have done some of the extending water lines through this grant process through the county, and I know Casta and Bethpage are one that they've done, and the other ones, they have added fire hydrants in that plan. Of course, five hundred hydrants cost money, but it is- Of course, fire hydrants cost money, but it is a protection. We usually putting six-inch lines in now, whether regardless or up, because of that reason, so the volunteer fire department can have a way to get their water some faster. And there were some comments about municipalities. I was reading, I don't remember the address, it was in the third district somewhere, that the city of Galton came out and helped with the fire. It could have been the first district, but the city of Galton come out and helped with the wreck not too long ago. One of the vehicles on fire, so they came out and helped. But the $10,000 is for one life per station? If we don't save one life for the 10,000 per station, I mean, it's well worth that. And I would, it looks like to me it could come out of tourism. I'm sure there's extra money in there for something like that, but I don't know that. Or it's a hospital fund, I know, that it could come out of. So, but anyway, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Driver.
I have another question. Are the volunteer fire departments required, or could they be required, to be a part of like an annual audit with the county every year for this money? Or no? Are not all nonprofits required to do that?
There are certain audit warrants, but, you know, they are independent. You don't, you don't ask the attorney to make calls or...
Well, they're not in our budget, though.
Well, they're in our budget that probably would balk at doing that detailed of an audit. Let Mr. Lawen speak to that.
Okay.
All nonprofits. One, the Budget Committee requires a pack showing their operations and a detailed budget, all the non, volunteer fire departments and all the nonprofits seeing that. There is a state statute that the county donates money to nonprofits. It requires them to file an audit. If they do not have an audit, they've got to file a form in lieu of an audit, and they have to file it with finance and the county clerk's office. So every nonprofit does have to file a financial statement, but it's not audited.
It's not as detailed as they need to require.
If they have an audit, they're required to file it, but if they do not have an audit, it does not require them to file one. They are required, required to file, to file a form that shows their operations and their revenue expenditures, but they're not required to have an audit, if that makes sense.
Okay.
If they have one, they have to file, but they don't have to have one because of this.
Sort of, okay. I think that makes sense. I just have one other comment. I've heard tourism come up a couple of times. If I'm, and Mr. Lawen, you might be able to answer this question. Last year, I don't think we, tourism didn't really get an increase last year, did they?
Yes, last year.
They did? What was the amount last year that they got? Because I know tourism, one thing I hate about tourism, to take away too much from them, is that they work pretty hard to increase our tax revenue across the county year, all year long. And I think that we don't actually give them what they give us back in their budget.
Tourism, in, let me just see the numbers from the last couple of years. 2006, I mean, they received $425,000. 2017, it was $455,000.
2018 was $560,000, and 2019, as it sits today, is $650,000. To answer the question about if there's extra tourism money, anything over $350,000 that's not given to tourism automatically reverts into the general funds unassigned fund balance, which is used to fund the current appropriations in the budget. So if you funded additional volunteer fire departments in that manner, it would be in essence just taking it out of the unassigned fund balance.
Okay. Okay. I guess I just want to emphasize the fact that while there has been some, there have been some increases, it looks like probably bigger increase last year and this year than in the past, tourism in general brings a lot of tax money to the county, and I hate, and we have never given them back what they put in, and I think that's important for us to recognize. We have a tourism department that does an fantastic job and that works really hard all year for those, that tax revenue. And to take away from them when they work so hard to put that in, I think is, is probably a mistake.
Everybody over here thinks I'm calling for the question, but I want to have, I have a few things to add to this lengthy and in-depth discussion. To begin with, we started with Mr. Taylor saying, we have the money in the budget, so we don't have to go tearing it apart, trying to find $130,000. Now, I've been here 12 years, and I know of one small budget increase this group got. Maybe there's been a second one. There was, it was equally as small. Some of you are asking, acting like we just dropped this on you for $10,000. They've been needing this money for 12 years and more, and I promise you, they got more than $12,000 worth of places to spend it. Now, we can take the good old political thing and kick the can down the road, wait for one more report, and by then it'll be too late for next year's budget, blah, 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 blah. I think Ms. Krueger had an excellent point. We've got a lot of kids out there at risk. I don't believe any, I've never heard that brought up before. Excellent point. So anyway, can we please vote on this thing? I call for the question.
You're the last in the queue, so we can...
Thank you.
You, you did it effectively, Mr. Foster. Let's vote.
The amendment...
We're voting on the amendment.
Amendment for $130,000 is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With 19 affirmative votes, the amendment is approved.
Okay, we're now back on the main motion, 1806-02, as amended for nonprofit organizations. I see no one in the queue. Let's vote.
The resolution, 1806-02, as amended, is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 21 votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay. Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1806-03 is setting the tax levy for our county fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019. All the commissioners will recognize that this is the same rate per hundred that we've had before. We moved some pennies out of debt service and into capital projects, as I mentioned before, to provide some flexibility for anticipated upcoming capital projects. Other than that, the, the percentages are the same for the categories. I move to approve.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Bill Taylor. I see no one in the queue, so let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes, all 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Resolution is approved with 22 affirmative votes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kent. Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1806-04 makes appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of some accounting for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019. This resolution funds our departments through the budget process. Mr. Chairman, as you know, we scrutinize every, every expenditure very closely, and this was a result of teamwork and progress that all of us can be proud of, and I move to approve.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Okay, well, we need to get, we need to get a motion made and seconded. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Bill Taylor. Okay, well, let's go to our finance director.
I'm just requesting that we amend the appropriation resolution for the action taken on the nonprofits. That needs to be amended for the $130,000 with the approval.
Okay. Is that, let me go to Commissioner Chris Taylor. Mr. Vaughn, I'll come to you in just a minute.
There's that one, then also there's a second.
Okay, go ahead and do this, do the first one first.
The first one's...
Hit your, hit your button, please, Mr. Taylor.
This one's to remove $4 million appropriations on page 56 of the budget document and adjust the budget appropriations resolution. That money will be for local capital spending. It will fall back into that general fund and still have to go through general ops and the budget process and everything else for approval. It's still going to be there. We're not removing it. We're just moving it to where it needs approval for each time it's spent.
Okay. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, excuse me, amendment offered by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Leslie Schell. Let me summarize that real quickly before we vote on it. There was $4 million that was, where was it, Mr. Taylor? Help me here.
It was on a line item for local capital spending.
Okay, it was on a line item for local capital spending. It will now go back into the general fund, where it will go through the, the normal expenditure process before it's spent. Okay, so that amendment is on the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Hang on, hang on one second. Give me just one second. Right, so now we're speaking on the, on the amendment. Mr. Goode.
Just clarification for the maker in a second. If you can clarify, Mr. Chairman, I think what they were saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that allocation is still for the same, same exact items, but it will go back in and have come back through the committee process.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. All right. Mr. Vaughn, did you want to speak on this or the, okay, okay. All right, there's no one in the queue, so we will vote on the amendment.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, the amendment is approved.
Okay, we now need an amendment offered to account for the 130,000 increase in our budget. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Steve Graves. I see no one in the queue, so let's vote.
All right, amendment on the 130,000 added to the budget is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22, all 23 votes are entered. That amendment is unanimously approved. We are back on the motion for the budget as amended.
Okay, I see no one else in the queue on the budget? Let's vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kent. Yes, sir, 04, 04.
We are, we are, 1806, 04 is on the board as amended. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered, 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, it is approved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, as a result, we do not need 1806-05 since we approached, passed the budget, so Mr. Foster, I'll turn back over to you for 1806-06.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1806-06 appropriates 237,000 from general fund unassigned fund balance for juvenile detention due to an increase in severity of crimes and number of crimes, and I move to approve.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Guthrie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1806-07 transfers $3,408,550 within capital projects for the additions renovation to Jean Brown Elementary School. This is from our 2014 building project. This is the end of it, and I move to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Lamar. Let's vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hyde. I apologize, Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Chairman, just a short comment. A few years ago, when I came to Hendersonville, we had two elementary schools, Hendersonville Elementary, which became Jean Brown, and Nanny Berry. It's grown a little bit since then, and because of the growth in new schools, Jean Brown has ended up with the vast majority of their population on the opposite side of Galveston Road. When we did the last renovation at Jean Brown, we were hoping at that time, and I see a couple of board members here, that they would think maybe sometime in the future about a building complex on the other side of Galveston Road. It's a, it is really difficult, the traffic there with everyone coming from that side of Galveston Road, across Galveston Road, when there's only a small geographic area and number of students actually attending Jean Brown on that side of Galveston Road. And probably with the addition at Walton Ferry, Walton Ferry and Lakeside, pick it up. I'm just saying, I will vote for this and support it. It's in my district, and it is needed, but I hope that in the near future that the Board of Education will consider the locate, not only the age, which is the 40s for the main part of the structure, but will consider the geographic location as being pretty undesirable.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hyde. I see no one else in the queue, so let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1806-08 appropriates $14,971 for an increase in fees for a projected shortage in health and dental insurance expenditures for the county clerk's office, and I move to approve.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Chris Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1806-09 appropriates an additional $30,000 from general fund unassigned fund balance for the increase in autopsies, and I move to approve.
Okay. If you vote against the autopsies, then you have to go do one, so. Motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, Mo Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 1806, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1806-10 appropriates $10,000 from general fund unassigned fund balance to the Bridle House Rural Access Grant received in fiscal year 2017 for the Bridle House Park Development. This is just a pass-through grant, and I move to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Krueger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1806-11 is a resolution appropriating $202,500. That includes $3,000 for closing costs from local capital projects fiscal year 2017-18 for the Galveston First Baptist Church Southwater property parking lot, as previously discussed, and I move to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Foster, just a second.
Second.
Seconded made by Commissioner Schell. Mr. Vaughn, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to bring up a couple of things on this, and I hope that we've got some answers that someone might be able to give me, because I would really like to vote for this. But what I don't see anywhere in here is a contract for sale.
It's not drafted yet.
I'm sorry.
It's not drafted yet.
So we, so we're appropriating money on a contract we don't have?
Well, it's, the money will be there, and we will develop the contract, and if the contract's not developed, the money won't extend.
Sort of like one of those, you've got to buy it before you...
No, it's not a buy, it's just putting the money on a sign.
What about, how much land are we purchasing? I just, I went over a little while ago and looked at this land that I parked on for years, and like I said, I really want to, I really want to vote on this. I would like to vote for it. But it's five different tracts of land, and it actually goes up to six or seven tracts of land over there that we, you know, one of them is the smallest, .09.
And that's part of the negotiation.
Can you hit your microphone?
That's part of the negotiation, is we're going to have to get the actual tracts of land, get the, get the descriptions to be able to develop the contract, and ultimately, if what they're offering is the little tract of land, we'll come back and tell you that. What we're looking at is what we consider the old parking lot, which obviously lays differently than the Google Earth picture of it.
And I look at that, and it's actually pretty small in itself. I see, you know, and I did, somebody asked a while ago, do we have it appraised? And what I saw... and somebody asked a while ago, do we have it appraised? And what I saw is just-- I did a little quick CMA while I was over here. Looking at about $93,000 an acre is what it's worth, just from, you know, just a real quick down and out CMA. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to refer this back to general ops and in the budget, so we can get some good answers on this.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Jim Vaughn-- excuse me, is it refer, Mr. Vaughn?
Refer back.
Refer. Motion to refer back to general ops, made by Commissioner Vaughn, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. Mr. Becker, did you want to debate this, or are you waiting on the main motion?
Well, I can speak. My question to this motion is to the--
Okay, hang on one second. Let me get your microphone up, Mr. Becker. There you go.
So what would the-- I guess the motion here is to send it back to gen ops, and I'm on that committee. So general ops is-- you know, is the question surrounding that we need the entire land for the parking lot, or what do you want general ops to do?
I don't know what we're buying or what we're proposed to buy. Like I said, there's five different tracts over there. There's no way to know right now what we're purchasing. So general ops would be the perfect place. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I hope I didn't just--
No, you're fine. You're fine, Mr. Vaughn.
Start speaking without your permission.
You're fine.
General ops would be the perfect place for it to go back to, to find out exactly what we're purchasing, and then it would be great for budget to know, are we-- is it worth it? In other words, are we paying too much for it, or paying enough, or maybe not be paying enough? So might be getting a really good deal on it, but we really don't know yet. We don't have enough answers to our questions.
Thanks for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ring? Yes, I'm also on gen ops, and when we had our committee meeting, we saw a map of the property. We saw it laid out, because when we talked about paving this, when the subject came up, paving this, a year and a half ago, a map was drawn that showed where the parking spaces were and what the property was. So we've seen that. The general ops has already seen that. I'm assuming that that piece of paper also went to the budget committee, so I'm not sure what the reason to pass it back to general ops is.
Hang on, let me-- I've got a few in the queue before you. Michelle.
I was waiting for the camera to get there. We did discuss this in gen ops at length. The city of Gallatin actually had that piece of property engineered, which is the map that Commissioner Ring is speaking of. They paid to have that parking lot engineered so that we would know exactly how many parking spaces, so that we wouldn't have to pay for that when we got ready if the commission chose to move forward to purchase that piece of property, to pave it, because the engineering work has already been done. We've seen that map. I'm not quite sure why that map is not included in our packet, but gen ops did have access to that map, and we forwarded that on to budget. So I agree with Mr. Becker. I'm confused as to why it would come back to gen ops, because we made a motion and approved it based on purchasing that land as described in the map that we saw. I wish Executive Holt was here. He might could speak to that, but he's not. So, but we do have a map of that, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay, all right. Mr. Vaughn?
I'm very familiar with engineering, the curbing and everything that went on over there, and I think it's great that we've got a map of it, but like the commissioner so just pointed out, we don't have anything in writing to show what we're purchasing. We don't have a contract which gives the meets and the bounds of all the properties we're purchasing. I just think it's prudent, when we're spending taxpayer dollars at $200,000, that we know what we're purchasing. And right now, it's a vague map that has no writing behind it. That's what I-- my wife and I do for a living is real estate, and I would never go out and represent a client without knowing exactly what we're purchasing. So thank you, Mr. And I think-- oh, the reason is, is just because of that. I'd like to see-- I'd like to see what we're purchasing, because I'll say it again for a third time, I really wanted to vote on this, because it's a lot of the people I know that would actually use that property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. We've got Mr. Graves and Ms. Echols in the queue. Are you wanting to speak about the motion to refer, or are you wanting to speak about the general? Okay, hang on one second. We'll go to Mr. Graves and then Ms. Echols. Mr. Graves?
I just want to concur with Commissioner Vaughn about what it's worth. It's good to have a map of the property, because I don't have a clue where it's at other than it's in Gallatin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graves. Ms. Echols?
I just have a clarifying question in order to vote on this, and it's probably best for Ms. Dinnon, I guess. You said that the vote, which we're voting on amendment on the amendment, is to appropriate the funds, to move the funds. We're not actually voting on whether to accept a contract and make the purchase. We haven't seen. Is that correct? Or does that effectively give permission to enter into a contract and make the purchase because we've appropriated the funds?
Well, my thought on this, because of the way-- this is linked here. The engineering map, when it sits on top of the land, as you look at the aerial view from the tax assessor's office, it crosses several of those parcels. We're in the process of discussing with the Baptist Church, making sure that we're getting all those parcels and what the meets and bounds descriptions are. If that all works out, because what the committee approved was that engineered map, if that's what it all is, it'll be fine. We'll draw up the contract. It's good to go. If ultimately there's some issues with that, we'll bring it back, because what general ops approved was that engineered study. But when I sit that on top of that aerial view, I'm not exactly sure, because it crosses some lines.
So the vote to appropriate is, in effect, a vote to enter into a contract if everything lines up as we expect that it will?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's-- let me say this. It's not unusual for y'all to appropriate money and us then not enter into a contract. The contract be drafted after the fact. But there again, if the contract was for $10,000 to buy 10,000 widgets, if it was different, we'd come back.
Ms. Echols, does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Driver.
My question, just simply, is there a detriment, Ms. Dinnon, is there a detriment if we send this back, as far as with the buying the property or whatever else? Because I hadn't heard anybody ask that question. Is-- are we losing something if we send it back to ops?
I believe the church is ready to sell the property, and I think if it goes back to general ops and then has to go back through budget again twice, there is a possibility that the church will choose, because we don't have a contract at this point, will choose to just put it on the open market. Right now, we kind of have a gentleman's agreement.
Commissioner Mo Taylor?
That was a lot of my questions, but I would like to clarify and just ask if this is tied to the JPA courthouse project.
I mean, it could be at some point, but right now--
Parking structure or something like that.
Yeah, parking structure or something, but I mean, it's going to benefit the current jail, current courthouse. You know, I think that's the main reason, is my understanding from general ops.
I concur with the senior commissioner from the sixth district. That's why I made the second, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Commissioner Becker?
So this question may not be directly about the amendment, but it may impact my vote on the amendment. So I want to understand. So I heard where we're talking about Ms. Dinnon said that the map that general ops used when we approved it, passed it on a budget, et cetera. If it differs from that, what we were thinking it was, then it would get brought back no matter what, because that's good to know. And then at what point, I guess somewhere in the process, obviously, an appraisal of the property needs to occur. At what point in the process does that occur?
Well, the decision-- and, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, that was made by general ops was, you know, a sale is a willing buyer and a willing seller, and them coming together. Paying $2,500 or what it would cost for an appraisal, they didn't think was a good use of county money, because if we want to buy the property, this has been offered to us. This is the price. It's the county's decision. Now, if y'all want an appraisal, we can order one. It's just more time, and it may not-- you know, what if it comes back that the value is $70,000? That's not going to mean that the church is going to lower the price. It just means we may not want to buy it. And right now, the desire of the committee was that we do need this for future parking and present parking.
Yeah, I don't recall the general ops committee really going into discussion about appraisals or whatnot, maybe remember. Yeah, because it's not the role there. We passed it on because we felt there was a need, and then budget may have had the discussion that you just mentioned, but--
I feel like at this point that we've moved beyond the refer, so I think unless we've got two people in the queue, unless it's directly about whether or not to refer, we're going to go ahead and vote on the motion to refer, and then if anybody wants to jump back in on the main motion, they can. So a yes vote on the motion to refer is to refer it to general ops. A no vote is to move back to discussion on the main motion.
Motion to refer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. With nine affirmative votes, motion to refer fails to carry. We're back on the main motion.
See no one in the queue, so let's vote.
Main motion is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 21 votes are entered. 22 votes are entered. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 13 affirmative votes, the resolution is approved. Is that in the budget at first reading?
It's his first reading.
On first reading.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Postecel?
Mr. Chairman.
We're adjourned.